This conference will now be recorded.
It's about time. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to the Tenino City Council work session. We've all been waiting for Jen and Rhonda to start recording again at their leisure. Nothing, anything, okay. The only other thing on the work session is we have the appointments and committee assignments. So that's pulled up on the, on the screen. So if everybody wants to take a look at that, if you have any questions, comments, suggestions, anything we missed or messed up on, please let us know. We've made a few, I hate that I can't, oh, there we go. We've made a few changes, added Cutter to a few things, Solid Waste Advisory Board Finance Committee and TRPC. We added a couple of things that I'm now on. And, and then we added the chief to the things that she needed to be added to. So if, if anybody has no further input on that, we'll, we'll move on that in the agenda. Should, is it on the agenda? I thought we might have missed it. It should be under Old Business. So we'll add that under Old Business Committee Assignments and then we'll adopt that if the council so chooses. Any other comments, questions, anything you want to talk about? Hearing none, I will give Troy Cannon the opportunity to give a public works report since he's with us. And we can, we can hammer him for the next five minutes since we never see him. Troy, you there?
Yes, sir, I am here.
How many potholes are you filling out there?
What's that?
I said, how many potholes are you filling out there?
Quite a few. We did quite a few Monday and a little bit today, but we have quite a few more. We've also been, we got the water hooked up out at the wastewater treatment plant. So the wastewater treatment plant is now on city water. We got to decommission that well.
Nice.
Yeah, yep. You guys want to talk about a little bit of sludge hauling? We have called out.
Whatever, whatever in your world, do something about it.
We have called out half of our contracted price. What was a hundred thousand, I think it was, almost positive it was. We're about sixty some thousand dollars into it. There were a little more than halfway. So we made a pretty good dent in that sludge pond. I am working with Tribeca right now to get some prices on dewatering and hauling the cake, the dry material after you dewater the sludge. We have also been working on maybe doing some of the dewatering ourselves in-house with the, with the guys we have. So we're just trying to figure out what the, what's our best option right now. I don't have no dollar figures I can give you right now, but I can give you some of the, the rental cost for the dewatering device was, I think we're looking about fifty thousand dollars for the month. And that would do two hundred fifty thousand gallons of sludge a week. So we could empty that pond in a month. But we, we still have to worry about the cake, which is the dry product from the sludge we'd have to get rid of. So that's why I'm working with Tribeca. Hopefully we can come up with a good plan with Tribeca and get that thing completely drained this year. And hopefully soon we can start taking the septic receiving. That's our biggest goal right now to help out the city with some cost and whatever else. But we're working hard at it. We're trying to, there's a lot of hurdles to jump and try to move forward with that, but we're getting there. I, I think it's, everyone thinks it might be taking a long time, but it really, we're, we're trying so hard to get that going. Other than that, we're just going through the basic stuff. You know, like Wayne was saying, potholes and we're replacing the meters still. Brent's doing a great job this week. He's, I put him on just full time this week to replace the meters. I am getting prices right now for the toys that were damaged by the tree. I've got prices back for replacing the toys. I got the install. I'm still waiting on the curb because we want to put that, a curb around that plate area this time. So it's, you can keep all the wood chips inside of it and it's a cleaner look. Right now without the curbs, we're looking at about sixty some thousand bucks. But as soon as I get all the numbers back, I'm sending that to AWC. We're hopefully in some insurance money. But other than that, we've just been doing public work stuff. But if anybody, you got, anybody got any questions for me or anything else?
Yep, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds still.
I just think you guys do a good job.
What's that?
At eight thirty this morning, I saw that they were drying in the roof. How's that, do they get it finished?
Yes, they did. They got that, well, they re-sheated the roof and then dried it in with some fabric too. And they, hopefully that roof will be here. I was told tomorrow, but we'll see about that. I got a meeting tomorrow morning with Construct Inc. about doing some stuff upstairs in the council chambers. We have some pretty good ideas, you know, some flooring, some painting. But also I've been thinking about moving that bathroom. This is discussion tomorrow morning with them about moving it out towards over the roof over.
All right, seven thirty.
Sorry.
Going to call the work session to a close and.
Thanks, Wayne.
Well, yeah, you don't have to stick around for the rest of it now.
Okay, all right.
But you can say, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February ninth, twenty twenty one, Tenino City Council meeting. Like the record show that all council members are present. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. It's nice seeing faces and people turning on their cameras. It's, it's a lot easier on me when I feel like I'm talking to people and not just letters. So just thank you for those that are brave enough to do that. We have an agenda before us needing approval with the addition of committee assignments under Old Business.
No approval. Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the addition of committee assignments under Old Business. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to approval of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the January twenty sixth meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar consisting of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, through February ninth, twenty twenty one. Payroll EFTs and checks number two nine six six nine. The amount of thirty two thousand seventy nine dollars and nine cents. Claims checks number two nine six seven zero through two nine seven zero seven. And EFTs in the amount of fifty four thousand four hundred and three dollars and two cents. Four grand total of eighty six thousand four hundred and eighty two dollars and eleven cents. With no liquor and cannabis license renewals. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion regarding the consent calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to presentations. Tonight we have Mr. James Reddick from the Park Foundation of Thurston County. It's a nonprofit organization in Thurston County that has done a tremendous amount of work for the city of Tenino. Well, for the community of Tenino over the last decade. And so James is going to tell you about Park Foundation and he has a presentation, a check presentation. So the floor is yours, Mr. Reddick.
Is Jane on?
She texted me and she said that, I don't see her, but Don was going to and decided to go to Home Depot and said, so I'm not seeing her.
Well, he had some money to spend. My name's James Reddick and I'm the vice president of the Park Foundation. And number of you I know from past experiences, but some of you don't. The Park Foundation is, stands for Parks, Arts, Recreation and Culture Foundation of Thurston County. And we started in nineteen ninety eight. And our mission is to support, preserve, enhance parks, arts, recreation, health and wellness and culture, historic programs, facilities, assets, and to seek donations, grants for Thurston County, including all cities in Thurston County, Thurston County, and organizations aligned with our Park Foundation mission. We, this list of grants is over the last two and a half years. Twenty twenty's been a little bit slow because of COVID, but we were up to passing through in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, about a hundred thousand dollars a year to various organizations and cities. We worked originally with the Yellow Bike Project in Tenino. Then we became involved with John, who started this with the Splash Bash Committee. And so we were the fiscal agent for that. And we've been that for the last, I think, three or four times. And Linda's been involved in that. We also are working with the friends, we have an agreement with the Friends of Tenino Parks. And so if they get, we've gotten some money from them to do things in the park. And we've walked, we've worked with them, the Friends of Tenino Parks and Alliance Club of Tenino to do Earth Day. So those are some of the things that we've been doing in that area. We've also worked with the cities of Lacey, Olympia. A year, I guess, two years ago, we got a grant for the city of Lacey of five thousand dollars for their replica train depot. And so that is all taken care of. And so working with Jane, we put together a packet and sent it into Burlington Northern Santa Fe. And just recently we received a five thousand dollar grant for the Tenino Caboose project. And so that check has been sent to the city and that will be, help them, help you guys finish out the, the caboose project. So we felt that was really great. There's a couple of ways you can work with Burlington Northern. Cities can apply, but then they have to produce a lot more background information and, and documentation. With us as a nonprofit, they don't require that much back in data and stuff behind the city and stuff. So we've been able to do that and we hope to do it again in the future. So anybody have any questions?
No, I just want to say thanks, James, for everything that you've been doing with us and making sure that our, our funds are being passed through just as they're supposed to be. Thank you for all that work.
James and the Park Foundation have been like one of the most important things that have happened to Tenino in the last decade. If, you know, if you, you think about other larger communities, nonprofits are more prevalent and they're more, you know, they're, they're everywhere. You go to Olympia, you, you can't throw a stone without hitting a nonprofit. In Tenino, we're smaller, there's not as much activity and the requirements for administering them are, are so, you know, they, they require almost a full, a full-time job. And so, you know, we recognized that about a decade ago when the Chamber of Commerce wasn't, you know, they're not a nonprofit. There were, there were really no nonprofits in the city. And James stepped forward and he, and he said that he could act as like the fiduciary agent for nonprofits. And so like the Yellow Bicycle Project, it was never itself, or is not itself a nonprofit organization. It is a committee of the Park Foundation. And so it gets all the rights and, and abilities of a nonprofit. And so it's, it's a really slick way of doing things. And over the past ten years, they've, they've helped Tenino tremendously. They really, it was like opening a floodgate. So thank you, James.
I just say Rhonda was a great help on, or no, Jane was a great help on writing the grant with me. So I appreciate that. And I didn't mention it, but for the last, I think, two Oregon Trails days, we've been involved as the nonprofit for that when you have your fundraisers. So, so that's it.
Linda, you were saying something and I think I jumped on top of you, so I apologize.
Let me say, thank you, James. You do a lot for the city of Tenino, the Chamber of Commerce, the Lions Club, Earth Day. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Okay, I'll see you later.
Okay, so from the council, we would like to entertain a motion to accept the five thousand dollars from the Park Foundation Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad.
So moved. I recommend that we send a lot of appreciation to the Park Foundation and James.
Okay, sir. It's been moved and seconded to accept the five thousand dollar grant and also send a letter of thank you to James and the Park Foundation. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, thank you, James.
Yes.
That brings us to, yes, sir, that brings us to public comment. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please go ahead and do so at this time. You'll be given three na, three minutes. State your name and address. Again, if there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment. Okay, hearing none, moving on. That brings us to public hearing. We have none proclamations, we have none old business. We have, we have a matrix of committee assignments before us. If the council so chooses, they can make a motion to adopt the committee assignments as presented.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the committee assignments. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That brings us to new business. Is Preston with us tonight? I do not see Preston. His letter should be attached. Mr. Preston Wallace, he's a, he's a medic with Lacey Fire District Three and also an employee for Medic One. He is asking for permission to use the Quarry House once a month to teach public, the CPR, apparently CPR to the public free of charge. His request is attached tonight where he presents his, his statement, but it's, it's pretty simple. He's saying that the classes will be held under COVID restrictions following all guidelines. Thurston County Medic One provides the instructor, the equipment, sanitation supplies. All students and the instructor required to wear masks. So they're following all guidelines and this is again, free to the public. So we are asking the council to authorize the administration to allow the usage for free since there's a, a good, a good give and take to the public.
So moved. Second.
There's, we have a motion in a second to authorize the allowance of Thurston County Medic One to use the Quarry House for teaching hands-only CPR to the public once a month. Is there any discussion?
I was going to bring it up, but you already mentioned it. It is hands only, it's not, it's not mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. Just so everybody knows that this is almost a twenty-year program now of just chest compressions. And they found out that as long as you keep pushing on the heart, it's pumping air through, through the entire body and getting oxygen in. So it's, it's now an approved method of CPR.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah.
All right.
So it says January twenty twenty one is like the hopeful date to start holding classes. Is there a new estimated date?
We would have to get that information from Preston.
It sounded like he wants to do the fourth Saturday of every month, starting in February.
Thank you.
Okay, here's no from the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Awesome, awesome. All right, that brings us to the next order of business. So we were, we're down to our last bit of wooden money. I think we have five pieces left. And we've been contacted by the Smithsonian Museum of American History, which this is huge. And the Smithsonian has asked if the city of Tenino would provide them some of our pieces of wooden money for placement in the, in the actual Smithsonian in Washington DC. This is, this is like the highest honor any, you know, anything I think anything could ever receive for the, you know, for the Smithsonian, the, the museum of, you know, the United States to step up and say, hey, Tenino, your, your thing that you've done is worthy of being preserved for, you know, all of mankind. It's huge, so.
I'll pay for it.
Yeah, yeah. So we, we have, we have a couple of pieces left. I am, the motion, I'd like the motion to say that we retain the remaining few wooden dollars for posterity. And then we would be working with Smithsonian, the Smithsonian to ensure that they get what they need. And then, you know, maybe our museum would need one. I don't recall if they have any or not, but there's, there's only five left. So we want to, we want authorization from the council for the administration to be able to retain them for posterity. And they'll be placed in collections.
Moved. And like I said earlier, the money that we're sending them, let me know what, what the denominations are and I'll pay for them. This way there's no loss.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. All right, that brings us to resolutions. We have none ordinances, we have one. That brings us to reports. Chamber of Commerce.
Mayor and council members, if you don't mind, I'd like to give you the chamber report and EDC report and a study report.
Go for it, sir.
So first off, on the Chamber of Commerce, I'm working with the Chamber, first off, George Sharp. I'm the role program manager for Thurston EDC, but I'm also working with the Chamber in support. And wanted to let you know, the Chamber has a brand new newsletter that they started in February. So if you'd like to be on that list, just send me an email at Gsharp at ThurstonEDC.com. And it'll probably come out weekly when there's information to announce. Secondly, the Chamber is coming back and sponsoring their monthly forums for their luncheon. It won't be an actual sit-down luncheon, but it'll be a Zoom meeting luncheon with the limited capacity of a few people to be able to attend it in person at the Sandstone Cafe. Next week, it'll be, it's always on the third Wednesday of the month. And next week, we'll be announcing a couple of things. One, we're going to be putting on a Tenino Spring Show on March twentieth in downtown to showcase our artisans. Second, we're going to actually announce a new small business recovery program. And then third, we'll be having an update on the Southwest Washington Ag Business Park being built in Tenino. That'll take next week. And there'll be a information in the newsletter and also be on the Tenino Chamber Facebook page of how you can sign in to attend that meeting. From the EDC standpoint, we're working with the Tenino Planning Commission to help write the Economic Development Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. Tomorrow night, we'll be attending the company, the Planning Commission meeting and talking about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats of, that we've accumulated so far. And we hope that Planning Commission will add to that and then we'll bring that to council later for your input. They're also proposing a community survey and we're drafting that and we'll share that with the commission tomorrow night. And then from there, we'll actually share it back to you and ask you for your, your input. If there's any additional questions you would like to see added to that community survey. And hopefully launching that survey sometime in March or early April. And then study will take place next week. It's also a Zoom meeting. We're going to have an update on broadband in Thurston County and what's happening with that. And then also we'll have another update from the Southwest Agricultural Business Park at that study meeting as well. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, George. We have no report from the VCB. Does the fire district have a report, Councilmember Callahan?
No, we'll meet Thursday.
All right, library, nice to see you.
Thank you, good to see all of you guys. I'm Linda McKinney, I'm the library manager for the Tenino Timberland Library. And I want to thank the mayor and the council for approving the concept of expanded access hours at the Timberland, at the Tenino Library. This is subject to the approval of the board and they've made it clear that it's not something that's going to be happening until the public is allowed to be in the library building again, excuse me, which is of course, subject to the governor's guideline. So it's something that we can look forward to hopefully in the fairly new, near future. But I think it'll be a wonderful thing to, to allow the community to access the library, the computers and pick up their materials for a far wider amount of time. It would be understaffed during that time. But especially for people who are commuting, it would allow more flexibility for their schedules. So pretty excited about that. Another exciting thing that I've mentioned once or twice is we're getting a lot closer to having our new shelving installed. It looks like we'll be doing it sometime in March. And I'm continuing to work with the shelving company as well as our facilities for Timberland to get all of the things lined up and the timeline good to go and dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. But that will be, that'll make a huge difference in the interior of the library. One of the biggest things is that our shelves right now are currently eighty-four inches tall. And they'll be brought down quite a bit to be sixty-five inches tall. So it's really going to open up the space significantly. And we won't lose space for materials because we will actually be using the bottom shelf of our shelves, our new shelves, which we've not been doing for years. So still have a good, robust collection of physical materials as well, of course, all of our electronic materials that are accessible all of the time. Let's see. I did want to mention that while we're in the takeout only phase of library service, we have been offering project kits for all ages at the library, at least one per month. So we have Storytime to Go, which are providing a free book and some Storytime materials for kids. For preschoolers, we have, I think this month we have catapults for the grade school kids to pick up. They get to make their own and learn a little bit about the science and history behind it. And for adults this month, I'm trying to think what our project is. Oh, it's going to be card making. So they get to pick up the little bag full of all the items and take it home and go through the pictorial instructions and, and hopefully have a little bit of fun and learn something as well. And the last thing is to remind everybody that we do have virtual programs going on at the library now. It's, if you just access our events calendar on www.trl.org, you'll be able to see all of the great things that we're offering, offering from author talks to teen hangouts. So check that out and you'll find our full collection of e-materials, electronic books, audiobooks, streaming movies, databases, all of the, everything that can be accessed electronically, you'll find at that date, at that address as well. I think that's pretty much everything. So unless anybody has any questions, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Linda. It's nice to see you. Museum. No report. I think that's what he just said. Tenino Community Service Center. Okay, Arch Commission, George, do they have anything?
Yeah, we have people that are starting to apply for the Arch Commission. You should be receiving applications this month and hopefully we can kick that off in March.
Awesome, march for Arch. Civil Service Commission, I do not, what's that?
Can I just do one other update on the chamber? The new chamber president is Cheryl Pierce from Sandstone Cafe. She took over in January.
Excellent. Chief Lowheed, I don't believe the Civil Service Commission is met, but you have an update on a hiring?
I do. Good evening, everybody. We have just completed the hiring process with a new officer, lateral officer, Aaron Lee. who is coming to us. He was formerly an officer at the Evergreen State College Police Department. And so he's going to be starting on March 1st. And we're also going to be bringing on board provisionally for a six-month period, one of our active reserve officers, Drew Johnson, who is going to be replacing Officer Garcia while she is on deployment with the National Guard. So that's going to be just a temporary six-month position.
Okay, thank you. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee. I do not believe they have met. Finance Committee, nope. Planning Commission, they meet tomorrow night. Chief of Police, hey, it's your turn again.
Yeah, I think I'm all done.
Come on. What else is going on over at the PD?
We've been working pretty hard on hiring for the last month and we, it's been pretty boring other than that.
I bet. Okay. And then Officer Garcia's last day is tomorrow?
Correct.
Okay.
He's going to be gone for almost a year, I believe.
Man. Director of Public Works gave his report. City Attorney Clerk Treasurer, Mr. Garrison.
Just trying to use, keep things maintained and moving along. The end of the year, of course, has come and that with that comes a lot of reports. So I'm working on those and cleaning up some of the things that needed to clean up to do that. So nothing much besides that. Not very exciting.
We like not very exciting. My report, I, I'm, I think it's been put out there fairly well. There, we are having a town hall meeting on the 11th, the evening of the 11th. The participants, so it's not, we, we don't want to confuse it with a council meeting. So if you do attend, you will be attending as a member of the public. So we're not creating a quorum, but it would probably be better if you didn't attend because then it, it, it makes things even easier to not like give the appearance of some type of impropriety. Mayor Pro Tem Linda Godavac will be attending with me and it's, it's going to be a fairly informal question and answer. There's a lot of, lot of discussion going on, on a lot of different subjects. So we just want to put ourselves out there to try and field questions that the public may have. And, you know, kind of work on rumor control to the best we can. There's a few issues that we are unable to really speak freely about because there's ongoing investigations and things. So we're going to be very cautious of that. But nonetheless, you can explain why you can't say things sometimes. So sometimes even though you can't say, you know, give the full story, you can give the story to why you can't tell the story. So that, that, that's our intention as well as talking about a few other things. I think everything that you guys are all very well in tune with. So if you do attend, you know, let me know maybe, but then also keep your microphone off. Please. Be that.
Sorry, I forgot to unmute. There's no report.
Okay, CIP. Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Awesome. Um, there's some exciting stuff coming, but nothing new to report as, as of now.
Okay. Studies already reported out. TCOM, I have no information on them. School Board. School started today, yesterday.
I know. What a difference a few weeks makes, right? Sky was falling in January.
Schools never opened again.
I know. I know. So this week, K through 5 started their in-person learning and they're going to, they're doing the AB schedule. Middle school, 6 through 8 starts on the 22nd and then they'll keep with the AB schedule. High school, however, they're facing some challenges because they have to be under 200 or under for Thurston County of positive cases. And right now they're just a little over 200. And then also they have to comply with Department of Health as well. So even if we do meet that 200, if there's, you know, still some things that are flagged, then they still can't open. So with three and a half months left of school, I'm holding out hope that high school will go back. But I'm also-
Started back up, right?
The what?
School sports have started.
School sports have started. And they have to wear masks the whole time. Girls volleyball is open. And soccer is open. So I'm excited to see how that goes. And what this upcoming fall season will look like for sports. So also superintendent, they have it narrowed down to three candidates. I don't know if anybody's interested, but you can go onto the Tonino School District website. And so tonight, they actually had a, a meeting where the community got to join in. And her name is Jennifer Kendall. She was first up. And it's basically just an introductory for each of the candidates. And so tomorrow will be John Hannah and it's at 6:30 and you'll see the link. It's on the very bottom. If you just want to tune in and, you know, see who might be a possibility for the superintendent. But John Hannah actually was a superintendent for Morton. So he's, he's got a pretty good resume, but that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. TRPC.
Awesome. And then to comment on Rachel's thing really quick, the three candidates are great. So we're, we're in good hands, no matter who's chosen. But for TRPC, we had some great presentations for PUD and Buildable Lands. And then we are currently planning our retreat. So nothing exciting.
That's all exciting. TPB. You're muted.
Tomorrow morning.
Here we go. Tomorrow morning. All right. That brings us to public comment period number two. If there is anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, please step forward and do so at this time. You'll be given three minutes. Hearing none. I'll be moving on. That brings us to announcements. John O'Callahan, what kind of announcements you got for us tonight?
Okay, I've been watching what's been going on in the state really closely because as you know, last year, all the fairs and everything was just canceled, including the, the first responders potluck barbecue. It looks like a lot of this stuff may be opening. George, if you have any other further information on that, that would be great. But it looks like things are starting to open back up and we may have some of the fairs. If that does happen, we'll finally have the fifth first responders potluck barbecue again in September.
Great. Any other announcements from council? All right. That brings us to adjournment. See you later. Thanks for coming.